Good evening, everybody. Uh, what we're going to do tonight, uh, we're gonna let each individual board, call it board, water, and start it from here to my right. And then what we're gonna do, I'm gonna call, uh, this is a little different from what the tenders say, I'm gonna call Mr. Evans up to just bring us up to the table while we're here. And then we're gonna turn over to each school board to make their presentation for the keynote session. Here and now, I'd like to call the Edgecombe County Council of Commissioners to order.
Edgecombe County Board of Education, come to order.
Good evening, I'd like to call the Nash County Board of Education meeting to order.
Good evening, folks, I'd like to call the recess meeting of October 25, 2023, Nash County Board of Commissioners back to order this time.
At this time, Mr. Evans, please come forward just to bring the boards and the brother up to the table while we're here.
Hold on one second, make sure everyone can hear me. Testing.
If there's not, Mr. Evans, we'll step over here, I'll use these notes, but can you do it? You all right?
I'll use one of these.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to say thank you to the Rocky Mountain Event Center and Sports Facilities Company for allowing us to use this wonderful facility here for this very board of meeting, uh, both for our board, but mostly for our citizens that are here tonight. Just to remind you that Session Law 2023 dash thirty-seven, also known as Centville three eighty-two, was passed on June twelfth, twenty twenty-three. It includes a provision that says that the school districts between national edge county counties will change and move to the county lines, which is referred to as the county line merger. This is to take place July twenty twenty-four. A transition plan must be submitted to the State Board of Education by November fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. Tonight, both superintendents and their staffs will present their respective parts of this transition plan. To the board, uh, for you board members, you will have the opportunity, uh, to ask questions and make comments. Uh, I recommend that the board members fold your questions until the end of the presentations, as some of your questions may be answered in the latter part of the presentation. Also, when you do, please make sure that you pass along the nearest microphone to you, so that both, uh, those who are here in the audience, as well as those who may be watching remotely, will be able to hear you clearly. There will be no action taken on this tonight. Instead, each board is asked to consider approving the plan by the adoption of a resolution at their regular meetings in November. Though there is not a place on the agenda for public comments tonight, we do encourage citizens who have feedback to share that directly with the appropriate school or county official, or to attend the appropriate governing body's upcoming meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe we have first up, uh, Edgecombe County Schools, Dr. Andrew Bryan.
Good evening. I'd like everyone to be here and, uh, just welcome everyone. To begin tonight, um, I'd like to take a moment of privilege, ask for a moment of silence, if you may. Yesterday, Ashford County Public Schools lost an employee, um, a teacher at South Quest Edgecombe High School, Lamonty Key. I'd just like for everyone to take a moment of silence to remember her and her family in this time of day. Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight, and, um, just would like to cherish the amount of hard work that's gone in to putting our plan together, both for Ashford County Public Schools and Nash County Public Schools. It's been a tremendous honor to work with all of the administrators and educators within both of our school districts, and board members and community members and attorneys that worked and helped us put this plan together. At this time, I'd like to recognize anyone from Ashford County Public Schools or Nash County Public Schools who's worked on this plan, please stand and be recognized by the boards and the community. Please stand. Thank you for all your hard work on this, on this plan. And, uh, all that hard work that I have seen, I know that's what excites me and assures me that we will be able to make all the necessary arrangements to make sure our merger makes itself. And as we had spoken to me times before, Dr. Ellis and I spoken about the teamwork that's been involved with this, and I think the boards will all be very proud of how hard everybody's worked together to make sure the glory of the spirit, to make sure this plan is successful moving forward. In that note, I know that we have a lot of logistics to present to you tonight, a lot of different things that we want to make sure that we're successful with. We've also begun to shift the conversation to what we believe is one of the most important things that we're gonna be talking about, actually, the most important thing we're gonna be talking about, is the education of students that we involve in the merger. And it's actually, it's absolutely imperative that we continue that conversation, involve our community, our parents and children, in moving forward to make sure as that merger occurs, we provide the very best education possible for our students who are involved in that. On that note, again, thank you for being here tonight. And I will turn it over to Mr. Ronnie Sharp, who will provide you with the presentation and also cover the, uh, highlights that are at your, at your seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan. Let's see if this podium will move a little bit to you. There we go. Let's slide this over a little bit. Thank you, sir.
That might, that might work now.
Just a minute. I didn't have to slide it off. After all. Now, I'm going to point it in that direction so that I can see the presentation, if you don't mind. Just give me just a reminder. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your presence here. Thank you for your support throughout this entire process. Thank you for your input and suggestions, your concerns, and just for supporting our youngsters in Nash and in Edgecombe County. So, good evening to our county commissioners. Good evening to our county commissioner chair, Leonard Wiggins, Mr. Robbie Davis, Ms. Shonda Washington, chair of Nash County Public Schools, Dr. Evelyn Wilson, our vice chairs for the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners, all of our board members for the county commission, as well as for the Board of Education. Good evening to our attorneys who have come to support us tonight. Good evening to our superintendents, Dr. Stephen Ellis, Dr. Andy Bryan. Good, good evening to all of our transition, um, participants and those supporters who have encouraged us and worked with us very closely, both from the Nash County side and from the Edgecombe County side during this entire endeavor. We welcome you. My name is Ronnie Sharp. I serve as the District Transition Director for, uh, redesign for this process and transition. And, uh, we want to present you with our abbreviated response to Centville two forty-eight as it relates to the main components contained in our county line written plan of transfer. This overview will follow, that will follow, will represent our goal of streamlining our efforts to highlight the main components in our transfer plan. You will note a couple of QR codes here, and those QR codes will take you, uh, to a more closer detailed, uh, examination of the written plan of transfer. The QR code on the left is the actual, uh, two forty-eight written plan of transfer. The QR code on the right provides a, an overview of the presentation that is occurring tonight on this stage. So, for those who wish to, uh, acquire additional detailed information regarding the plan itself and these processes, feel free to peruse those, uh, documents through that QR code scan. Staffing. Edgecombe County Public Schools invite staff to apply to continue to serve in our Edgecombe County community. An expedited application process and acceptance process will be utilized for staff members who currently serving at Fairview, DS Johnson, John, uh, Baskerville and Parker Middle Schools, including a series of talent recruitment events, which we started on the twenty-seventh of September at DS Johnson Elementary School. Our school structures consist of mainly regarding feedback from the community, from our community design team meetings, um, from our county line merger planning committee meetings, et cetera. And those recommendations were that we would maintain the current school configurations of the four newly acquired Rocky Mountain schools for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, pending board approval. So, pending that board approval, our students will be assigned to these schools using the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four Nash County Public School attendance boundaries. And let's briefly examine these elementary and middle school structures located in the upper left-hand corner and the bottom left-hand corner of that slide that designates school structures. Fairview will consist of pre-kindergarten to the second grade, DS Johnson, third through fifth grade, Baskerville. And you'll notice, if you see down there in parentheses, pre-K pending licensure, that means that there are no current pre-K classes at that site at this time, uh, but we will be examining that. Parker Middle School consists of sixth through eighth grade. Our ninth grade student center, uh, will be located either at the Industrial Incubator Site in the northern part of Rocky Mountain, which is about five point three miles from Edgecombe Community College or North Edgecombe High School. Our next slide. High school students. Our ninth grade high school students will have a unique educational experience at either the Edgecombe Industrial Incubator or North Edgecombe High School. Students can also apply at Edge Academy of Health Sciences or the Early College High School. Our ninth grade students participate in athletics at, um, North Edgecombe High School, and students entering tenth, eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth grades will have the opportunity to continue as legacy students within the Nash County Public School System until they graduate. Ten through twelve grade students who elect to become Edgecombe County Public School System attendees will attend North Edgecombe High School or apply to attend Edge Academy as rising tenth graders. Transfer of assets. ECPS continues to work closely with the Nash County Public School System regarding the transfer of assets. Uh, items purchased with state funds in ECPS and NCPS are working collaboratively to transfer these items to ECPS. Items purchased with federal funds, on the other hand, at ECPS and NCPS are working collaboratively with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and the U.S. Department of Public Education to determine the reasonable fair market value of these assets, which depreciate. And how Edgecombe County will acquire these selected assets, they will work with us to determine those processes. Technology. Edgecombe County Public Schools is working with the Nash County Public School System to examine our internal budgets to ensure that our students have the technology that they will need in order to be successful. Transportation, very important piece. ECPS will receive buses from Nash County Public Schools according to the current legislation, and we operate, uh, approximately, uh, sixty-five passenger buses, which is the number of seats on those buses, and Nash County Public Schools currently operates a fleet of passenger buses that seat seventy-two students. And the ECS, the ECPS maintenance facility can only service sixty-five passenger buses, therefore, we are exploring the option of partnering with local LEAs, uh, with those fleet buses that are sixty-five passenger buses, to receive the additional seventy-two buses from NCPS and provide us with the sixty-five passenger buses, so that we will be able to transfer our students based on our needs and the accommodation, um, maintenance pieces that we have in our unit. As for academic programs, we're excited to share that ECPS, our focus on innovation and strategic design of our schools, and our academic programs are done with our students and families. Therefore, if you desire to become a member of this effort, um, please scan to join the QR code that you see on that slide, and that will take you to an area where you can actually click on that piece to become a member of that program, and you can, uh, work with us to make sure our kids receive what they need in order to be successful. Uh, if you will note on that slide, you'll see that, uh, ECFS, ECPS is in the process of creating these design teams, uh, through pre-K and two, three, five, six, eight, ninth grade and beyond, as we acquire those students moving forward in the years following two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. As for our community involvement piece, ECPS is committed to transparency and continuous communication with the community as we transition our families into our district. We just want to highlight a few of the things that we are participating in, and this is not an inclusive list, but it just highlights just several of our, uh, major components. Uh, we are currently and will continue to, um, host monthly communication meetings through our community meetings, uh, our superintendent advisory councils, which will begin on the nineteenth of this month, uh, our signature learning experience design teams, and the parent parental participation through those teams, through access through those QR codes, the alignment of our school calendars with Nash County Public Schools and Edgecombe County Schools, Public Schools working closely together to make sure that our parents are able to, regardless of where their students attend, um, work through those calendar issues, uh, in, in aligning, uh, in a cohesive manner. We also are providing welcome packets to our families, um, at, um, just different events and also at carpools and things of that nature, to make sure that they feel welcome in our system. Our merger plan of transition timeline, um, the main one that we want to highlight is obviously November fifteenth. That is the date when the written plan of transfer is due to be submitted to the North Carolina Board of Education for approval by the three, I'm sorry, by the four boards. Uh, we want to highlight just very quickly October twenty-fifth, and we would ask you all to please feel welcome and feel free to come and attend to support us, uh, as we meet at Baskerville Elementary School on the twenty-fifth, and again, on the twenty-ninth of November, we will meet at Parker Middle School. Our last slide simply repeats that second slide, which provides an opportunity for, uh, a closer examination of, um, the written plan of transfer to forty-eight, um, on the left-hand side and the presentation that we're conducting currently, uh, here. So, I turn it over to my counterpart in Nash County, and I thank you for your attention and your support.
So, good evening. I just want to first like to welcome both sets of boards and commissioners tonight. This has been a, a tough undertaking. As I told you in my last meeting last Monday, they did not write a book about a demerger. I think we are the first two systems that have attempted this, and I tell you what helps out is the collaboration and the work ethic in putting students first with Edgecombe and Nash County. So, as Dr. Bryan applauded, um, both school systems, I could not say anything better. It has just been a great working relationship, because, like I said, we're putting students first, and we're just never going to forget that, we're going to move forward, we're going to make sure this gets done. And then me and Andy can retire someday and write a book about this. We'll see. So, tonight, what you're gonna have in your packet is, you're gonna get our plan of transfer, but there's going to be an inventory list, which is what Mr. Sharp referenced about the items that are in the schools. So, you'll see a plan of transfer, and then you'll see an inventory list. And then if, if there are any questions after this, I'm assuming all our cabinet members are up here, and we can have the questions. So, at this time, I'd like to have Victor Ward come up here, our transition coordinator, to discuss this plan of transfer. Mr. Ward.
Good evening. As Dr. Ellis said, I'm Victor Ward Senior, Director for Transition and Safety for Nash County Public Schools. Protocol has already been established in the web, so I would just say good evening again. Uh, if you would turn your attention to our plan, uh, the Nash County Plan of Transfer, I believe that's your second packet that you have in front of you. What we would do, we would go through our plans, um, most of you have had the opportunity to, to review this, and so what we would do is just go through the plan, um, as is by page number. I would dare not read it to you, but I would point out, highlight certain aspects of our plan. As we go through this plan, you will recognize that our plans mirror each other in structure and format, uh, with the exception of our plan, of course, is primarily the relinquishment of, um, of course, property assets and of, of course, students transferring, so that will be part of the difference, as you will see, but you will notice that we mirror our plans in structure and format. Uh, we began our plan with, of course, a detailed table of contents for you, as you can see outlined on page, um, one and two. We've provided you with an executive summary. This pretty much just put in context, the historical context of both districts in terms of how we evolved and how we got to, uh, become Nash County Public Schools, Edgecombe County Public Schools, and also it just mentions this process as well. On page four, uh, we've provided you, provided you with a forward statement regarding the agreement between all four boards. Page five and six provides you with our core responsibilities of our superintendent and also of each of our departments and our divisions. Page seven, eight, of course, you see outlined, we have our transition planning teams, um, listed by department and title. Page nine, which is titled overall impact of our data, as you can see, um, that currently, well, these are not current numbers, I will say that, these numbers will change prior to us submitting our plan November the fifteenth. So, this just provides you with a guesstimate of the current number of students, um, that are, that are enrolled in each one of those schools. Also, in the second column, which the number of students that are domiciled in Edgecombe County, which brings us to our post demerger in the last column, uh, providing you with the number of, how many students that may remain, or the approximate number of students that may remain in, um, Edge, Nash County Public Schools post demerger. On page ten, we've provided you with the number of staff that's housed in each facility, in addition to the Teacher Resource Center, and also the School Nutrition Building, which you see a zero in the column for School Nutrition Building, because those staff members have already moved to another location within our district. On page eleven, this is the fiscal impact for Nash County. As you can see, there is nothing for state funding, um, local funding, of course, you know, current budget for Nash County was the twenty-five million, minus the two million for, um, that would be reverted to Edgecombe County, leaving us with twenty-two million post demerger. Federal funding, current none, and of course, the three million dollars that will revert to, um, Edgecombe County. And here again, these are, um, projected estimates. Page twelve provides you with a list, a breakdown of PRC codes, which are program report codes by our staff members. Uh, for example, oh, oh, one, those are your classroom state positions. Um, currently, in two thousand three, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we had seven hundred five positions, um, less than five hundred eighty-seven positions, which will have a reduction of one hundred eighteen positions, um, at the end of the year. And this breaks it down, this gives you by position and also dollar allotment for us. On page thirteen, you will see a more detailed breakdown of the certified and classified staff members by state and local funding, um, that would be for part-time and full-time. For instance, I'll just take one example, Baskerville Elementary School, currently six point two positions, um, and that includes arts, music and PE. One DC position, three point three, uh, positions for, includes guidance, media, social workers, and two principals, or administrators, I'm sorry, a principal and an assistant principal. And of course, NA, there are no certified full-time local, and they're certified, last column, full-time, part-time, those that are in federal positions, and that is, um, by each school. On page fourteen, you will see a summary of federal assets. As Dr. Ellis alluded to earlier, you do have a packet with a detailed breakdown of all inventory assets, um, by school. And this is just a brief summary or overview by school, by PRC code, again, program report code, of all the federal, uh, programs. If you look down to the, on the bottom left-hand side, the PR descriptions are provided there for you in regards to the federal funding or source of funding or funding stream, um, the fifty, of course, is titled one, one oh five is the C I F, C I S, so forth and so on. And back at the top again, is broken down by each code or PRC code, and also it gives you the dollar amount. At the bottom, it gives you the expectancy, life expectancy, because that factors into in terms of the dollar amount or the price of those federal assets in terms of their longevity, life expectancy or their longevity. Page sixteen. Community, communication and engagement. Um, from the onset, as, as Mr. Sharp mentioned earlier, we have been very transparent in this process as much as we can by, with our internal and external stakeholders, and having community forums, um, getting input from our stakeholders, and also meeting in the communities, hearing from, um, board members and so forth. And so, this has been a very, um, open process from the beginning, where we have engaged not only And so this has been a very, um, open process from the beginning where we have engaged not only, um, Edgecombe County communities, but also Nash County community members as well in this process because we want to make sure that we have input from all, all that will be involved in this process moving forward. So we've launched a commi, a couple of community meetings ourselves for our own students in terms of, uh, where about four hundred students will go. We're going to have the place for, uh, the upcoming school year that live in the Nash County side. So I just want to again, give a shout out to Edgecombe County for their community meetings and partnering with them has been really great, as our superintendent said earlier. Page seventeen, student transition. Uh, this section pretty much outlines our student transition process as Mr. Sharp alluded to earlier in terms of our students in ten, twelve, in terms of those legacy students remaining in Nash, will have the option to remain in Nash County if they so choose. Our plan, um, as will follow, you will see on the next page, page eighteen, which, um, we've outlined, started with July, our student transfer timeline for this process. However, we have been, uh, really careful about what we've said in the community because we really want to wait until the plan is approved before we give any detailed information about students being, in terms of the process and how it's going to work. However, we have provided and outlined it here in terms of how we think the process will, will be moving forward. But again, we just wanted to make sure that we had approval before giving any definitive answers, uh, to the public. As you can see, our timeline on page nineteen will run through, uh, twenty twenty-four. So once the process has started in terms of, we don't want to use the word demerger, uh, growing together, that's a part of our campaign as well, growing forward together, to be more specific. And in April, we will have, I'm sorry, in March, we will have probably, um, one hundred percent of this process complete in terms of getting, uh, information from our parents that will remain in Edgecombe, I'm sorry, Nash County Public Schools, those ten, twelve students that will remain, um, that process will hopefully be finalized by March of twenty twenty-four. Also within the transition plan, it speaks to our student records, how records will be handled, um, on both sides with Edgecombe and Nash County Public Schools, making sure that those records are secure and that they're transferred in a proper and orderly manner. On page twenty, um, it speaks to the safety and security of our schools in terms of the safety equipment that will remain in those schools. Um, the cameras and the electronic safety equipment, with the exception of one school that is a federal item that may have to be purchased, but, um, other than that, the safety equipment, as is mentioned in our plan, will remain in those schools. Um, transportation, and again, Mr. Sharp, um, alluded to that in his PowerPoint earlier in terms of our transportation directors working together to resolve the bus issue in terms of the seventy-two, seventy-two passenger buses and the sixty-six passenger buses, in terms of how those buses were working with other counties to get those seventy-two passenger buses transferred out in exchange for some sixty-six passenger buses so that we can accommodate, um, Edgecombe County Public Schools and their transportation needs. Um, technology, um, technology will fall under the federal assets as well in terms of, um, the equipment and devices that will be in those builders and the funding, I mean, I'm sorry, the cost of those. And so that pretty much is in the spreadsheet. So that will fall up under the federal assets of this particular spreadsheet here as well. And again, our technology departments, they have been communicating with Edgecombe County as well to make sure that this is a very streamlined process as well. And page twenty-four just pretty much provides you with a dollar amount of breakdown by school in terms of those student devices, staff devices, the cameras, the scanners, the interactive boards and televisions and printers that are located in each one of those buildings. And again, it just provides a dollar amount for those particular schools. And page twenty-five brings us to the conclusion. And attached, you do, you will have on page twenty-six, an appendix, um, which gives descriptions of some of those assets as well. Also, in the electronic version, we will have a link to this spreadsheet with a detailed summary of all the, um, federal assets that you have before you that will be included in this plan electronically as well. And the last page, of course, is the signature page. Once approved, all four boards will have the opportunity to sign at that time. Thank you.
At this time, uh, I, I thank the Director of Presenting and Access Presentations. And at this time, we will open discussions from any question, any of the four boards. And we got to go to who's the Dallas, who's the Florida? Any questions from the other side?
Okay.
The, the Sharp, next one's available, you think, the Sharp.
Yes, this question is the Director, Mr. Sharp. You talk about, um, when the E S C P S will make the decision on standing. When you, when you have a timeline as far as when our teachers will know exactly whether they accept it or not or not? Because one of the things I'm concerned about is making sure that we have positions for our students on the edge side of the aisle.
Let, let me ask you a question for the superintendent, the superintendent of the terminal, which staffs possible.
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I believe we have, uh, have an expedited process that we've already started to ensure that, uh, individuals, uh, in those four schools can apply for jobs. And we've reached out to them as well through communications to make sure they understand that process. And, uh, we've worked with Dr. Ellis to make sure that that process is outlined to them so we can get that done as quickly as possible. Because we understand, we understand that, um, they need to have answers as well.
So you don't have a time frame when you expect to have these position filled?
Uh, we've actually already started that process and, uh, we're, we have not set a complete timeline for that, but we're working on it right now so that hopefully we can give people an answer as quickly as possible, which is beyond what the normal process would be because we know this is such an unusual situation. Um, as we hire people, we're going, as we interview people in this expedited process, we're going to hire them as quickly as possible, which would mean even this year if we can get that done, meaning the end of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does we have, do we have a question?
Uh, yes, uh, how much time has been spent? All four together, or at least the two boards, school boards, in each county spent together working on this plan? And, uh, it looks like to me we have, Nash County has a plan, Edgecombe County has a plan.
Would you care to respond to that a little?
And, and I'll ask Dr. Ellis to join me up here too, because since we're both going to be answering questions. I, um, I can, I know that both, uh, boards, particularly both administrations have been working on this since, uh, even before, well, since legislation came out. And, uh, from what I can gather, this information, um, has been discussed for a long time. But the time has been put in to make sure the plans are, are, are done correctly. And there's been a lot of work done by both sides. Would you like to care to?
Do you plan to come up with just one plan and put these together?
You want to be talking about putting them together for one plan?
It should be one plan. And, uh, I, I have enough teacher assignments, uh, teacher supplement, and I've been working on that. Because there are several. I noticed Wake County in their student assignment, even though they were in one county. They had, uh, pro, parents rose up against what the school board were trying to do, even with, you know, student assignment. Uh, that's something that, uh, you need to pay close attention to and have parents involved so they won't come up and say, well, sometimes parents don't think about things until it's, a decision has been made. And try to minimize that. And, uh, teacher assignments, uh, you know, those schools on the Edgecombe County side, which are now in Nash County, uh, school district, have anything, have you discussed anything with them, whether, whether they remain with Nash? Or those that are working in the schools in Edgecombe County, will they still be there?
Let me, let me go back to your student assignment piece to begin with, and then I'll talk about the, uh, the, uh, assignment of employees as well. Uh, to begin, um, we knew, we knew that with the merger, that it was important that we try to give stability to parents and students as much as possible. So in those schools, we're maintaining the same attendance zones, um, that they're currently under right now as we start in, in July of twenty twenty-four, when Edgecombe County Public Schools takes over for those schools. The process for, uh, employees, as I outlined a little bit previously, uh, we're, we have started an exped, uh, expedited process right now to hire those, uh, employees that are currently working in Nash County schools and those schools, uh, so that we can give them closure and we can move forward because it's important for us to get, uh, great teachers and many of which are already working there right now and make sure that we support them in transition in those schools. I think would be great if those teachers can work in those same schools. And we've already told parents and students that they're going to be attending those same schools as well, that they are right now and the same feeder patterns, which should create some more stability for them.
Uh, could you work on delineating the plan when you have your final plan? Cause, uh, I suspect parents won't read a lot of detailed information, or at least make it simple that at least they have some knowledge of the demerger.
So the plan that we're submitting is going to be going into Department of Public Instruction. And I believe our attorneys are going to be handling that piece. That's the plan you're seeing tonight, to, to skim this down a little bit. When we have some communications with the parents, we don't just show them this plan. We give them some timelines, like we talked about tonight, when our community's meeting. That's what most of the parents are getting that information when we have these community meetings.
Could I say, is there a ongoing process that, that the school boards will be dealing with even after the submission of these plans?
That's correct.
Of student assignments, that's a, that's, that would be continuing. The plan are necessary so that, because the fact that most of this is going to be school board actions in terms of after we submit these plans, would, would that be correct?
Yes, sir.
Agreed.
And may I also add that in, in reference to consulting with, uh, and working with parents, uh, we have had community meetings, we're going to continue to have even more community meetings, and we put together a parent advisory group, uh, that I will meet with and our team will meet with, um, on, uh, for the parents and students, um, who are going to be involved in the merger to make sure they're all aware of the information that they're going to, uh, need to have to, uh, and where they're going to be attending school.
Yeah, I saw that in the plan.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, like I said earlier, most of the parents are not going to sit down and read line for line. And that's why I talked about delineating the important things out there, like transportation, student assignment, teacher assignment, maybe that wouldn't be as, uh, a stronger issue as would be transportation, student assignment. My suggestion would be if you could give, make sure that every parent have a leaflet about this demerger in. And at least if they don't like it, they can't come up and just blast the school board and the superintendent and his staff, that I didn't know this and we should have known. And, but, uh,
Yes, sir.
People don't do a whole lot of reading, TV and videos are just about, just about blocked them out. They're used to that, but, uh, minimizing issues would certainly help.
Yes, sir, I think that's a great idea, what you said. And I think that we will make sure, I, you can never over communicate. And I think we will do everything possible through various means and mediums to make sure that we get that message out there. And I think you're exactly right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am getting texts and the members that very appreciative of the plans and the details. However, they said if you're keeping the kids first, please consider athletics because there's a great reports for the elementary school tournament, basketball tournament. What will happen with some sports activities for the kids in terms of a round? And alluding to BS Johnson, I believe, so I'm just relating.
We, thank you, thank you. And, and athletics is very important. And we want to make sure that, uh, students, regardless of what level, that they are elementary medal or high school, that that, those opportunities are still available to them. And we're going to do everything possible to make sure that that happens because athletics is part of the educational experience and we're going to keep doing that.
My first question, um, for, um, Nash County Public Schools. I was looking at this asset list, now is this the total? Purchased or just the total at the school?
Those items are all federally purchased items, no state or local, in those buildings.
And, and who would decide what's a fair price?
So Ms. Wallace, I might bring you up here. We have a depreciation cost that the federal government gives us when we have those properties. We have a list that we go by, and if you read that sheet, it'll have like a, probably a purchased value, then it has a depreciation value of how old that item is. And it gives a breakdown of one, two, three, four, five years old, gives you a depreciated value list of that item. So if it's a TV, it'll say a purchase price, they don't have a depreciated price, which is the list we have given to Edgecombe. Now leave anything off, Ms. Wallace, is that correct? Cause we inventoried all the federal, well, everything in those bills we inventoried and audited to make sure we had a clean list for each school.
Uh, I also want to ask, we talked about seventy-two passenger buses. Did you not have seventy-two passenger buses at those schools? Needed at those schools? So how would you go to a sixty-six passenger if you actually needed a seventy-two passenger?
So, so Mr. Dr. Farrell, Nash County has seventy-two passenger buses. Edgecombe does not have those large buses because there's not a place to keep those buses that are that large. So that's why there has to be some sort of a agreement to get a sixty-six passenger bus instead of a seventy-two because they won't fit in the, um, maintenance department, is that correct?
I understand that part, I'm saying if seventy-two is what you were using at those schools, is that what you needed?
That's fine, but you won't have a place to house them is what the issue was. They won't fit in the maintenance. Excuse me?
Cause with that, the other bus, you don't have enough room for the sixty-six?
No, I'm, our buses are, the newest carries seventy-two.
I believe that.
We have a place to house those buses at, Edgecombe doesn't, so.
If those schools need seventy-two passengers to transfer their students, would they still not need a seventy-two passenger bus, even though it becomes Edgecombe County Public Schools?
It probably would, go ahead, Dr. Farrell.
It's not like it's a need, it's, uh, it's a situation where that is what, um, we were able to hold in terms of our facilities, so we were able to, um, get from the state, the largest bus available, which is seventy-two passenger bus. The sixty-six passenger buses are some of the older bus models. Um, and as Dr. Ellis stated, as, as stated before, we've been in conversation with Edgecombe County about, um, their facilities, the buses that they're able to handle. And when it comes to looking at the number of students, um, and the number of buses that are needed, we're looking from the very start school till the very end of school, to come up with an average number of the students who are riding the buses on the Edgecombe County side of the rock and to determine the number of buses needed.
Okay, that, that, that's right. That's, that's, that's right.
Thank you.
Dr. Bryan. I was really surprised that we didn't get anything in the plan showing an update, but how this change of these additional students would change your bottom line or the places you already have in place? I didn't see anything to make any expenditures or anything like that.
Yes, we're going to have to, we're still working on that number with the transition. And also want to make sure that we have a complete budget that will take that into account. It's difficult to do that right now, as we're working on numbers. And also, we're trying to still figure out the federal funding question with the equipment. And we want to make sure we have a number on that as well, as we move forward. This plan going forward, as someone said earlier, the plan is due on the 15th of November. But we know a lot of the work that will continue beyond that, as we work through our process and even the budget process as we go into next year.
So by 15th, you still won't need to include anything about this budget?
We will continue to work on the budget, but I think that budget question and process will continue as we go into our local budget process, as we go into the new year. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? I think we had some conversation about the idea of a presentation in terms of, in terms of there were maybe some students beyond the ninth grade, I hope we're talking about transferring, people in the house. And whether they, if the parents were willing to go to attend Nash County School System in terms of how we might handle it, having responses to that. And let's say we've got a child that's attending maybe Edward Junior, however, below the grades that we're talking about. We talked about they might be going to stay into the Nash County School System. And we talked about how they might, if you recall that conversation?
You speaking about ninth graders or the 10, 11, 12, 13?
We're talking about the eighth grade, we might be talking about the eighth grade that will stay in the school system. We had some conversations about it, I believe, in some of our sessions.
So Dr. Farrell, you want to answer that one? You might want to get a microphone.
Yes, so we talked about the transfer process, process to reference children who are 10th through 13th grade. And then you have those who are in the ninth grade, who will be remaining in Edgecombe. And so there's a likely situation that may occur, where there's a family who has a child who's in the 10th or 11th grade, and have another child who's arising freshman. And so the conversation was around, what will we do if a family member said, I do not want to be caught in a situation where I have one child in Nash, one child in Edgecombe, and trying to attend athletic events. And so this is the conversation that we have put on the tape, but it's not a decision that we have made yet. It's still one of the nuances that we really need to talk through about the student transition part. But I believe, I can say this, Dr. Ellis, from, from your perspective, that we want to understand those special situations that exist like that for families and make sure that we'll try to work in the best interest of families. And everything that I've heard from Edgecombe, they want to do the same.
I just want to put it on the table, because you might have a lot of parents that are in that position and they probably want some responsibility. Anybody else with any other questions?
I understand.
My question is actually based upon, we talked about the legacy students, I guess those who are 10, 11, 12, 13 grade. There is a per pupil allocation difference between Edgecombe and Nash. And according to what I read, is Edgecombe is only paying a certain amount of that per pupil allocation. The difference in that per amount, where is that coming from?
I think it's what, I think the plan speaks to what we said we're going to do. And where it's coming from, I can't tell you.
So is there any conversation?
I think this is the agreement that we're working, this is the agreement we're working.
They go, you come out, I'm not mistaken, there is a, there is a variance between those people that have the allocations, correct?
I, I think the reason, the reason that we're here is because of that gap money that you're talking about. Okay, so we're not talking, Edgecombe is not talking about no gap money. Okay, okay. I think the intent of this agreement is that these students will stay into the Nash County School System, okay, with the, whatever the plan speaks to, that we're going to send. There will be no gap, not coming to Edgecombe.
Mr. Shaw?
I'll say that's been the agreement that we're working through process. Yeah, there are some things that's where we are. And we wanted to accept this based on everything else that we've been able to agree to, that gap funding will not come from the county. If you look at the three-year process, it's a pretty small number, and we're prepared to entertain taking care of it now.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And that is one of the things that we have agreed on, both from the county commissioners' standpoint, but in terms of our conversation, okay. Is there any other conversation? I mean, you have it, go ahead.
I just have one final comment that I'll be making. And that is, I hope all of us will put the students first and get our personal feelings or whatever we have, any kind of personal agenda aside. And let's educate the students in both counties that we'll be proud of. And when economic, as we look at economic development, they, they look at these issues. What kind of young people do you have that's qualified to work in this particular industry? That we are taking a look at your district. And when I say district, I'm talking about Nash and Edgecombe. So let us all work to make sure that we put the children first. And when they come out of high school, they are eligible to do one or two things. Go directly to a job, or go to a community college, or college. And that will make this area great. And I've, I've seen 17 counties working together in Ohio, with Columbia being the capital, and also the, the head of that, those 76, 77 counties maybe. And they are doing wonderful in economic development and educating the children.
Just to remind you, I'd like to address more of our members, I'd like to address our home board. And what I'd like to say is to our home board, the most proud I have had in small groups, and we have met about how many times, about every two weeks or a number of times, is the way that this unique situation has been had. I assure you, as our board members, that it has always been very cordial. I have heard a false word whatsoever. And each week now, I leave, I leave with a big smile on my face, quite frankly, because I have gone so smoothly. It's kind of amazed me, this has been a controversial subject for a very long time. But I'll tell you, when you got down to get it done, particularly the school side of this, the board commissioners didn't have that much involvement in the details, as we shouldn't have. We were responsible for the funding, as we all know. But they have all worked together extremely well, and you couldn't have asked for it to go any smoother. And I just want to reiterate just how good it is, those have proud, I think every board member would be, they have stood in all of the meetings. Thank you.
My question is concerning the possibility of the Edgecombe industrial incubator. That was one that I had here and called, did not think it would be a good site for students. But in their very next thing, say the ninth grade were participating, how is it going to Edgecombe? Is that whether you realize the industrial incubator at the school, or how big is it?
Yes, that's correct.
Either way.
Either way.
Anybody else? Well, I, I guess my comments are along the lines of the state is, it's been a, a little work experience in terms of, with all of the board members, and the committee was composed of your commissioners, your chair, the commissioners, the managers of those, and the attorneys from those counties, the school board chairs and superintendents, and, and their staffs, and their legal teams. And has been, we have had some disagreements, we've got some unresolved questions. But I really would say that Nash County has given us, in terms of the unresolved questions they've given us, what they're concerned to be, the guidelines. And now they are, they and our staff are working through and is taking a possible resolution to those issues. We don't know what those resolutions are right now, but they are, it's been an excellent relationship. So I just wanted to commend all of those teams and, and staffs, the leadership and the staffs. Mr. Davis and I have been talking about this issue for 15 or 20 years, and we've been really disciplined. And oftentimes, we're disciplined, okay? But we do come back to the table. And, and I would say that in this, everybody's been very cooperative in terms of coming up with a resolution. And as we continue to work through those unresolved questions, they've been very cooperative. And I just want to publicly thank all of them involved. And our super, our super team, Brian Skipper Brown, running with this issue. And of course, he had an excellent team of professors in place, and I want to commend them also. I guess that I would need to get, are there any final questions? But here, one of the things that I failed to do when opening the meeting was what we normally do, is I'm going to let each one of us introduce ourselves, and we'll come back to that. Let all of the board introduce themselves, and we'll move on around the table, then Edgecombe. I'm the representative of the Edgecombe Commission.
We have a vice chair, Edgecombe County Commissioner.
Brad Wilson, representing District 5.
Fowler Harris, representing District 2.
George Thorne, District 3.
Evelyn Howard, District 1.
Evelyn Shaw-Wilson, Edgecombe County Board of Education, representing District 1.
We have Vice Chair, representing District 4.
Raymond Privet, representing District 6.
Man Kent, representing District 5.
Bill Morriswee, representing District 2.
Evelyn Joffe, representing District 3.
Two thousand, District 7.
Nash County Board of Education, Ms. Charlotte Washington, Chair, representing District 9.
Lang Dunn, Vice Chair, representing District 6.
Edmond Boll, representing District 10.
Franklin Layle, District 3.
Doctor Chase, District 1.
Zach Gray, District 8.
Dean Edwards, District 2, Southern part of Nash County.
Bill Sharp, District 5.
I'm Bobby Davis, that can't be District 4, District 7.
Quine Wilkins, Nash County Commissioner, District 6.
Wayne Alwong, District 5, Nash County.
Sue Leggett, Nash County Commissioner, District 4.
Dan Tomlin, Nash County Commissioner, District 3.
Fred Bealfield, Nash County Commissioner, District 2.
Marvin Erickson, Nash County Commissioner, District 1.
Can you see it under the curtain, we have one that has a situation in order?
Does there any other business to come before this joint session? Are there any other questions, any other business? Here are none, of the motion for the Edgecombe County Commissioners to adjourn. Second question, all in favor, let me know my votes are high. All opposed, here are none, the Edgecombe County Commissioners to adjourn.
Edgecombe County, we have motion for adjournment.
Uh, gee, I moved that to adjourn, excuse me, I moved that to adjourn, the Edgecombe County Education.
Has been moved and properly seconded, that we adjourn this meeting. The other discussion, I will take the motion, let me know by saying aye, or oppose the same time. Here are none, the meeting is adjourned.
At this time, our intention to adjourn, uh, the Nash County Board of Education.
So. Second.
Motion has been made, and properly seconded, and oppose the same time.
Any more questions?
Thank you. We talked about it just one moment, we had a situation to come up late, and we need to pass a quick resolution before we adjourn, something that affects us for a while, and we need to have to the state by the 23rd, and rather call another special meeting. But it is concerning resolution, the fourth request, going to allow the Department of Quality to finalize and implement a remedial action plan in the Nash County Close Lane Fee, at the Red Lane Fee site. Each location, if they have that, deliver to, I'll talk to each one of them today. And if you have any questions, I'll, I'll maintain a motion for approval of this resolution. Have a motion to approve, there's seconds. And second, any question on the motion? All in favor of the motion to approve the resolution, it's written, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed, by a light side. Motion carried, and I entertain the motion to adjourn the Nash County Board of Education. Have a motion by Commissioner Wilford, second by. Mr. Bealfield, questions on that one? All in favor of that motion, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed, by a light side, with that adjourned. Thank you.